Alrighty, first of all I want to say good evening to everyone. At this point I want to report out from the study session, the city council voted 4-0 to direct the CEO to hire a consultant firm to hire the new police chief. So that will go over to our city. So we've done that vote. Alright, so at this point I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council regular meeting. We do not have the finance nor the housing authority this evening. So at this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council regular meeting. Today is October the 5th and the time is 7:15. So at this point, I'm going to have Pastor Jackson lead us in an invocation, followed by the flag slay. So anyone able to stand, please do so. Thank you.
Father, we come in the name of the Lord, giving you praise, glory, and honor. Thank you for Baldwin Park, Lord. We need wisdom and knowledge and understanding in how to govern Baldwin Park. Put your hand up on the city council, Lord God, that they will know exactly what, when, and how to do to make the city a better city and continue to work in that manner. Put your hand on our school district, Lord. We have much children that are going astray, Lord, with drugs and gangs, Lord. But bring people in their space, Lord God, to help them to get educated, Lord God. Touch our teachers, Lord God, and our parents, Lord God, to steer our children in the right way, to go the way of college and education and jobs. Lord, we asking you to put your hand on our police department, our fire department, Lord. There's many things that are happening around our United States, Lord God, that the police department needs wisdom and knowledge to handle every situation that come forth. Touch our citizens, Lord God, that we will not have what we call racial prejudice ness brewing again in our nation, Lord. We need you, and you said to acknowledge you in all of our ways, and you will direct our paths. And so therefore, Lord God, we're acknowledging you for our nation, we're acknowledging you for our city, and we're acknowledging you for the city of Baldwin Park to be a great city. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
And thank you. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to, first of all, say thank you very much, everyone, for attending the city council. I mean, at this point, I'd like to close on behalf of Mr. Blas Ulises Ortagan, 69 years old, who passed this past week. His daughter, Margarita Rodriguez Ortagan, who's also here, with her husband, Jesús Rodríguez. Our deepest condolences goes out to your father, who resides in Colombia. And I want to also wish Jesús and Margarita Rodríguez their one year anniversary being married as well. Thank you. Any council members wishing to close, or?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank Marietta Higgins and her husbands for putting together this beautiful weekend of breast cancer awareness. They had Cruz, maybe you can help me out, how many businesses did they have out there?
They had 73 businesses.
73 businesses. They were able to fundraise for the Susan B. Coleman Foundation, and it was bike clubs, kart clubs. It was just really nice to see all the businesses that came together, and we have a lot of them here. It was a great event, so I just want to commend them for such a great, great job. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, I had an opportunity to be there, and lots of pizza, lots of good things, and lots of good people as well. So thank you very much for mentioning that.
So far, excuse me, so far it seems like she has raised, she's still waiting on some of the checks that were promised, but so far it looks like it's in the $12,000 or $15,000 that she collected. Our Techniques Kart Club was, has always been there to support, along with some motorcycle club, and lots of families, lots of children, of course, our businesses that are so supportive, our police department that is also very supportive. And with that, I did ask Shannon, since October is Breast Cancer Month, that we will be doing a proclamation the following council meeting.
Awesome. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, the following council meeting. Thank you.
Yes, council member.
One more announcement, if I may. Just want to advertise an event that the police POA is having for Halloween. The event is going to be held on Thursday, October 27th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. So we want to just encourage the community to come out. Thank you to the POA and police department for putting this together. It's going to be a great event. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Yes, council member.
One more thing. I was told by Cynthia, who does the community relations for the police department the other day, that October the 7th has been declared Coffee with the Cops, or Coffee or Something Together with the Cops Day, which will happen from now on, on October the 7th. And this October the 7th, it will be from 8:30 in the morning until 10:00 at the Starbucks on Francisco Gito and Baldwin Park Boulevard. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was confused with the other one, so, but it will start at 8:30 until 10 o'clock. So please, those of you that are able to stop by, please join us.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, I made the announcement, Cynthia.
Yeah, I just want to clarify one more thing, and so I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that the event is going to be held at the police department. Am I correct? Just correct me if I'm wrong. Yes, the Halloween event in front of the police department. Thank you, Mayor.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you very much, council member. Alright, at this point, we'll have our-
Mayor, just also wanted to mention that there's a Coffee with the Cops again on October 7th, from 8:30 to 10:30 at Starbucks. So if you want to just talk with our officers, get to know, be a great opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. Because it was already mentioned. Alright, alright, okay. Alright, so at this point, Madam City Treasurer, have you-
Hi, good evening, everyone. And if anybody wants any pink ribbons, I have some pink ribbons for breast awareness. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Cruz Vaca?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Present.
Mayor Pauta Monica Garcia?
Yeah.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present.
Thank you very much. Alright, okay, so, at this point, we have actually a proclamation, we have it right here, which is the proclamation proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Month. So go ahead and read, I'm going to go ahead and have the Vice Mayor Monica Garcia read this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And before we read this off, you know, one thing that our city is proud to have is a domestic violence advocate who, whose sole purpose is to assist victims of domestic violence and provide them with the resources that they need at such a critical time. And Cynthia Valdez does a great job of running that program. So thank you, Cynthia. And I think it would be appropriate for us to invite you to come up here and receive this proclamation. So as you make your way up, I'm going to read this. Baldwin Park City Council is proud to present this, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2016. Whereas domestic violence is a major public concern for our state and nation and is now the single largest cause of injury to women, and whereas domestic violence affects people of all ages, racial, socioeconomic, educational, religious, and occupational segments of our society, especially children, and whereas children from violent homes are physically abused or seriously neglected at a rate significantly higher than the national average and have greater risks of alcohol drug abuse, juvenile delinquency, cognitive and developmental problems, as well as fear, anxiety, and guilt. And whereas domestic violence is not a private family matter, but a crime, the consequences of which reach with devastating effect on the communities, schools, and workplaces of our nation and our community. Whereas public awareness and education about domestic violence are needed as well, as uniform efforts on the part of government, health professionals, law enforcement, religious organizations, educators, and community associations to address domestic violence through prevention, intervention, and treatment for victims and perpetrators. And we are very proud to, you know, announce this, it's the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is something that we've adopted in the past. It's something that's very important to us in this community, and proud to present this to Cynthia Valdez, who does such a great job for us in serving the community.
Alright, Cynthia, come on up.
Thank you.
Alright, we're going to have Cynthia Valdez say some words on behalf of you.
Well, good evening, and obviously I wasn't expecting to be up here, but I do want to say that I do take pride on this program that we do have within the police department and the city. We've actually started this program from 2010, and it's been going on, and over from 2010 to now, and that's including phone calls, victims that come in, actual victims. We've actually taken over 800 women that I've helped, if it's either resources, shelters, and actually taking them by step by step for restraining orders and court system. So I do want to say thank you, and I hope that it continues, and we continue doing a great job together as a team. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm Mary Tora Grossa. I live on Ohio Street in Baldwin Park, and tonight, I'm here to say something positive about the residents who benefited from a street construction, a project that began in the spring and has come to an end. And we feel that Mr. Gutierrez has done a great job overseeing this, and the team of people who were put in place were very respectful, it was done in a timely manner. Everything went smoothly. We are amazed. It was a 36-year, the resident who lived on the street the longest had to wait 36 years to have it surveyed and then surfaced and reconstructed. So we are very happy, and we are here to say thank you. Thank you. Oh, wow. That's awesome, you guys. That's great. We're going to get a picture with them. You guys, we're going to get a picture. We should bring them up here.
But, you know, hold on, let them get the photo here.
Come on up here. Come on up here.
Wait, I would like to take a picture first. I would like to take a picture first. Please, thank you.
Alright, come on up, everyone. Bring the signs.
Bring the signs.
That's great.
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so at this point, I want to thank you very much, and all those individuals that participate in this particular subject. Just want to like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak here approximately three minutes. Oh, yeah, next time. Yes, so, sorry about that. Yes, so, anyone wishing to speak, thank you. That's next.
Good evening, Ken Woods, I'm concerned citizen.
Let me see what he says.
Mayor, I'm going to take a page out of your playbook. Let's say, for example, this consultant gets up and talks about his consulting business with our city. He tells us what a great job he's doing. He tells us he's, has all this paperwork, and it's all up to date, explains everything, and he has meetings, and why he has meetings, everything is explained, sounds great. Well, he's a congenital liar. Everything he says is a lie. Everything that comes out of his mouth is a lie. His paperwork is fabricated, and they're all lies. Does that sound, Mayor, does that sound how I do it? Is that the way I do it? And, why do members of this council continually downgrade those of us who ran for office and lost? Do you expect us just to go hide under a rock and never be heard from again? If we did that, we would not be true to our cause or our convictions. But we are. That's why for the past 10 years, we have been at every city council meeting. I know you get elected over and over again. I'll give that to you. You really know how to work that system. You've learned how to manipulate those absentee ballots, and you depend on those large block of voters who just don't care and never show up. I see Rome is raising their head again. No property taxes? I hope not. This new thing that they're coming up with, at least I hope they pay property tax. Does everybody know that Rome does not pay property tax on that whole project? And they also, in their contract, it says they'll make no payments to our city, all the money they owe us, till they show a profit. That's an oxymoron. They're a nonprofit project. How would they make a profit if they're nonprofit? We'll probably never get paid. Though they had enough profit to pay three of our council people thousands of dollars in political contributions, right on time.
Thank you.
Hello, city council, Baldwin Park residents. You just had a meeting upstairs, Mayor, and I can't believe that, simple thing, roll call, you, what do you do when you sit there? You daydream or something? 20 minutes after we opened that door for a city council meeting, I know you were late, but still, 20 minutes later, if I wanted to flag this young lady over here and say, hey, roll call, you'd still be talking. No matter what we tell you people, you don't give us answers. Everybody here that wants an answer gets no answer. This city is going to have a reputation for, talk to them, but get no answers. You cannot, any of you, cannot tell us how much Rome has paid this city. And if it is, I think it's not the truth. You want to pass this other project, which we know you three people will pass, how much money does the city get for this? I know. Don't ask me, because I won't tell you. You guys are ashamed to tell the city how much debt we're going to be in? This project that they finished reminds me of Tijuana, better known as TJ. You people got to build stuff for residents of Baldwin Park that'll be very constructive. Make us money, so we can pay you people ridiculous amounts of money. But, don't ask questions, because you ain't going to get an answer. Mayor, you look at me like you got daggers flying out of your eyes. It doesn't matter, young man, I'll be here till the day I die. You especially should stand up and tell us what, we ask you a question, you should be able to answer it. And I'm going to ask all of you a question. How much is Rome paying us to do that finished project? And going to, how much are you then going to make off of us again on that second phase? Can't you guys make up one whole phase and say, this is a whole project? Why do you have to do it in seconds? I know why, because that way you can pass it, and they don't have to pay taxes. Don't you guys get tired of hearing that? Oh, I forgot, don't ask, nobody will tell you. You keep, Mayor, you keep telling everybody, this, this, this about taxes. Well, Rome, Walmart, Home Depot, Kaiser, I can keep going on through the whole city. Oh, somebody will jump up and say, we pay bed tax. Oh, big deal.
Alright, thank you. I'm Muilan with Public Communication.
John Reos, resident. One of the things that, because being brought up in my neighborhood, other than the chiefs getting fired and stuff, I get, is that, why are we the only city in the San Gabriel Valley that has a $125,000 gap? Every city other than Glendora has $35,000 for their directors, or, well, basically, directors, they're the only ones that can sign off, but we have 125,000? Where do you guys get that 125,000? Shouldn't you put it out to a vote for the citizens? Talking to the people from Glendora, Covina, West Covina, they all go through the process of having it voted, if you're going to raise the gap on it, okay? I don't know where you guys got it from, or maybe the district attorney, Mrs. Garcia, huh? Or you guys are just making a bigger gap, so you guys can get a better cut from the top. Okay? Sorry to say it, but that's the way it is. You know, you guys are not thinking about the citizens of Baldwin Park. You're thinking about yourselves. What can I get from it? Where can I send my kids to school, where, you know? The chief, you got rid of him, he's not a puppet. He had enough things to say that, you know, I'm not going to do it. Shannon, Manny, you guys are a bunch of puppets. You know, you guys have to open up your eyes when you get that little pink paper that they say, sorry, you're taking money from the city, you're going to have to leave, resign, or do some, you know. If you guys don't have no change, we're proud of Baldwin Park. It's time for you guys to wake up, starting with Mrs. Garcia, okay? You might have gone to BP, or whatever, attended USC, never graduated, you know, but it's up to you guys. Make Baldwin Park proud. Okay? Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Muilan with Public Communication.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. I want to thank the council for the vote up there. I think that was a good decision, what you guys did. Very, very proud of what happened on that. Also, I want to talk about, you all three, you all have a copy, I've gave you copies of news articles of what happened with Sid Masavi in different areas and sexual harassment charges. So those are all things that taken off of Google, those are news articles, okay? Nothing fabricated on there. Now then, I want to go into, why does Sid Masavi get a lot of deals here? Well, I just got the current 460 forms, which are political forms. Monica Garcia got $1,000 from Sid's company. Jimmy Gutierrez, the guy that did my TRO, which is a restraining order, he lost the case, cost the city $52,000, but he gave $500 to each of the council members, Monica, Manny, and Pacheco. Sid also gave Pacheco $1,000. So Manny, I didn't see that on your report. I don't know if $1,000 from Monica was from Sid or whatever, but Monica gave you $1,000. Now then, I want to read into some things here, they're very interesting. We had a city manager named VJ Singaloff. He sued the city, or he tried to, and then he didn't do his claim. But he also had a paper that he filled out, about 14 pages long, of all the complaints, and I'm going to read you some of them. This is his words. "The attorney's investigation report identified Mr. Pacheco had tendencies to bully employees. On October 7th, 2009, Mr. Pacheco was censored and reprimanded. In and about 2010, the city needed to hire an engineering firm to perform functions, construction managers, street improvements projects. Pacheco pressured Mr. Singaloff to hire Sid Masavi's construction manager instead of going through the bid process. Mr. Singaloff refused to violate the law." Mr. Pacheco asked Mr. Singaloff to give a certain individual, Jesus Sines, be hired as an intern. Well, you know who Jesus Sines is? The soccer boy. The one that you guys all promote, the soccer leagues? Pacheco wants to give him a job inside the city. Amazing. "On February 6th, 2012, Mr. Pacheco wanted the city to hire Sid Masavi, AAE, to perform projects for the city. Mr. Masavi is a friend of Mr. Pacheco and used to work for the city, had poor track record with the city, was under investigation FBI bribing council members in other cities, and wanted too much money for the contracts." Then in August 9th, 2012, Mr. Pacheco to hire his friend Jesse Mares, Century Diversified, to perform engineering services for the city. Mr. Singaloff's opinion was Mr. Mares was not qualified for the services, and he wanted to charge 175 an hour, when the going rate was 75 to 100 an hour. These are all facts. Anybody want copies? We got them.
Alright, okay, thank you very much. Muilan with Public Communication.
Good evening, I'm Mary Tora Grossa. I live on Ohio Street in Baldwin Park, and tonight, I'm here to say something positive about the residents who benefited from a street construction, a project that began in the spring and has come to an end. And we feel that Mr. Gutierrez has done a great job overseeing this, and the team of people who were put in place were very respectful, it was done in a timely manner. Everything went smoothly. We are amazed. It was a 36-year, the resident who lived on the street the longest had to wait 36 years to have it surveyed and then surfaced and reconstructed, and so we are very happy, and we are here to say, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, wow. That's awesome, you guys. That's great. We're going to get a picture with them. You guys, we're going to get a picture.
Sam, thank you so much.
We should bring them up here.
But, you know, wait, hold on, let them get the photo here.
Come on up here. Come on up here.
Wait, I would like to take a picture first. I would like to take a picture first. Please, thank you.
Alright, come on up, everyone. Bring the signs.
Bring the signs.
That's great.
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Arion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very 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 much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I have a nice friend now.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I have a nice friend now.
He's going to fix the letter.
That because it meant to be on the left side.
Ah, got it. Oh, no, no, he's not going to fix it.
Oh, in black! Oh, it's in black! Like this.
Let's do it in black, too.
Okay, guys.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Oh, Sam! We should have our picture with Sam!
Yeah, Sam, come on up.
Come on, Sam.
Sam, I am.
The N is upside down. It is, but if you turn it around, it's a black. But Sam.
Let Sam get the picture with the guys.
Come on, Suzanne. Come on! Oh, my goodness! Thank you, Sam. This is really nice. Mayor, I think we should put this picture in the now.
Yeah, well, we can't be in it.
Oh, that's right.
Want to get one with them?
The one that was out there? I think you took one out there. Yeah. I have it, too. I can send it to.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and move on with Public Communication.
Jesse Plata, resident of Baldwin Park.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Elected officials, appointed officials, city of Baldwin Park. I'm here because, two weeks ago during the meeting, I came here with a problem that I had where I live at, in the 3800 block of Foster Avenue. Somebody just set up a construction equipment and using it as a yard, storage, and everything. I got to go pretty quick with this because I've got some other things to talk about. And I was told that they were going to be off the property Wednesday, the following Wednesday. Now, some officials from Baldwin Park told me they were going to get, they were going to call me. Didn't receive a call until today. The call that I received today was that he was supposed to be out a week ago. It's two weeks now. As when I left my house, the same block, their equipment is still there. The fence is still there. Now, if you're in violation, you're in violation. There ain't no extensions or anything. It's, you get off right now, give them a fine or something. Now, code enforcements are supposed to be enforced. Is that why I see sometimes vehicles driven around Baldwin Park with no place or anything? And I know that they're not registered for years. Now, at the same time, I see some of those vehicles are being purchased from the auctions right here in Baldwin Park. Now, somebody should step up and start doing their job. Not everything is correct here in Baldwin Park, but I like to say it's nice to see somebody that was happy with what's taken here and placed in Baldwin Park. At the same time, those, some other individuals here, and they always have negative about Baldwin Park. One of them ran for office, and he was not even eligible. Now, he didn't know me, and I don't know him. All I know is when he comes over here, and all he does is cuss out everything. And I tried to approach him once, some 10 years ago, to find out who he is, what he stands for. That was his approach towards me. Some of those individuals really shouldn't even be here. I mean, they're so hostile, so bitter. They can't even control themselves to come up here and talk. Last time, they had people with shirts. Sure so happened that I asked three of them. They had no idea what it was about. Inform your support at least, and find out what you stand for. And I'm not saying that you're completely wrong. If you have an issue, follow it out right, correctly, through the process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. All right, at this point, could follow up on that about that? Because I did see that equipment. All right. Muinlan with Public Communication. All right, at this point, seeno, oh, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff. Before you, I passed out a brief council, or update to the council regarding the projects from infrastructure engineers that has been presented to your city over the past nine months. So quickly, as I walk through this, I'll just kind of qualify some of the summary updates on that. On page one is the status of all the different engineering projects, plan checking projects, and building services that we've continued to supply to the city of Baldwin Park over that past nine months, the status of the invoicing, and the status of the project completion. Page two is an update of the quarterly report for the bus shelter improvement projects, the design phase. And as you can see, the Prop A funds were utilized in this. Again, not using the city's general fund taxation. Page three is the quarterly report, again, for the Safe Routes to Schools project, preliminary design railroad crossing at McDevitt. Once again, using your Measure R and TDA Article III funds. The project is currently at 60% completion. The San Gabriel River Bike Way project, civil design phase. This project is using gas tax and grant funding. It's also at about 65% completion with a 54% build to date. The San Gabriel River Bike Way project, environmental services and permits. As you can look through here, again, the gas tax, grant funding, and the project has yet to be completed, and $0 have been expensed by the city on the project. Updated pavement management systems. This is to identify how your pavement condition is working in the city and projections for future funding allocations, utilizing Measure R, Prop C, and other grant funding opportunities to improve your streets and highways throughout your communities. The PMS was billed to date at 80% with a completion of 90%. The Fraser Street improvements, the pedestrian bicycle safety improvements, the civil design phase, is currently completed to date at 60% with a build to date of 50%, utilizing grant funding. The Main Avenue air quality analysis is completed, and that project was completed back in July. Another Safe Routes to School project for the surveying portion was also completed back in July. As you can see, Mr. Mayor, your citizenry here tonight has come out in force to thank you for many of the projects that you've presented to them and have followed through with. We intend to do the same on your, as your engineering consultants in many of these cases, and look forward to many future endeavors. Also, as we move forward, we've completed many of our project plans and specifications, and I brought those along with me tonight, and I'll present those to the city manager.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right, Muinlan with Public Communication.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sid Masavi, and my business address is Orange, California. Within the last few city council meetings, there has been some questions related to San Gabriel River Bike Way project that I'm here to address as best as I can. In August 2014, city asked infrastructure engineers to provide a proposal to design San Gabriel River Bike Way project. We prepared the proposal in the amount of $78,086. However, in December 2014, six months later, the Public Works Department issued an RFP that had our design elements and also other tasks, including environmental impact report, coordination with Caltrans, right-of-way engineering, geotechnical report, and construction support services. But in the same span of time, San Gabriel Valley COG was processing a project that could have impacted the scope of Baldwin Park's project. Therefore, we did not respond to Baldwin Park's RFP. The Public Works Department selected one of the firms submitting proposal in the amount of $355,740. This matter was brought to the city council's consideration in August 2015. However, the city council held award of the contract until COG's scope was clarified. In January 2016, in the interest of time and not losing the grant money, Public Works Department asked us to give a task order for engineering design, surveying, and agency coordination. So that grant money wouldn't lapse. We provide the fee of $165,510. For the same scope of the work and the same amount of work, the consultant who was previously selected and was brought to the city council's consideration had a bid of $176,000. In essence, by doing a task order with infrastructure engineers, the Public Works Department saved the city $69,745. Design work currently is about 60% complete, and city is now ready to proceed to the other phases of the project, which are environmental impact analysis, right-of-way engineering, geotechnical investigation. Should the city authorize us to complete all of the tasks needed for this project, the overall project cost will be $270,466. By having the infrastructure engineers perform all the necessary tasks for this project, it will cost city $85,274 less than if the city had awarded the project in August 2015. I hope that I was able to answer the questions related to status of this project, and I hope I was able to illustrate to this council that city will save $85,000 as a result of not awarding the project in August 2015. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. All right. Muinlan with Public Communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will now declare the public communication closed. All right, we'll go over to consent calendar items. Oh, yeah, okay. Consent calendar, however, item number six, we're going to hold over, which is a developer has requested to pull a staff report number six, parcel map 1426, LA Fitness, and bring it back on the October 19 city council meeting. So council members wishing to pull any items?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
On item six, even though it's been pulled, I do have some questions that maybe staff could address when they bring it back.
Absolutely.
So if that's all right, I would like to discuss some of my questions.
Sure, absolutely. All right. So councilman wishing to pull any other items?
Yes, I'd like to pull three, four. Like I said, six and seven.
All right, so at this point, I will make a motion to pass items one, two, five, and eight. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seenons, so move. All right. First item that's requested by council member Cruz Baca, which is items three, amendment to extend an exclusive negotiation agreement E&amp;A with the Rome Development Corporation for a proposed Phase Two to transit-oriented mixed-use development between Ramona Boulevard and the Ballpark Civic Center. Councilmember Cruz Baca.
This extension concerns me only because I believe that, first of all, we still haven't addressed some of the parking issues that we're still having, even with the Phase One Rome project. One of the questions that I was going to bring up is how are we, how are we looking at the overnight parking where they're not supposed to be parked? Because from what I understand from some of the residents, there are cars or vehicles that are being parked overnight where they're not supposed to be, that belong to the residents from the Rome project. So I would really like to see if we could take care of that or see what's going on with the parking situation. If we're going on to a Phase Two, I think that the traffic and the parking is still a huge issue here in Baldwin Park. And to only add more congestion, not only because of the train, but because of all the traffic that travels those Ramona Boulevard and Pacific, which we all know, I would like to see if there could be some type of a, of an explanation or a workshop or a study session that we could attend with the Rome people so that they can answer some of those questions for us. I still feel that it's still not safe from the parking structure from our police department onto some of the, especially the residents that are right there by our police department. So I have had some concerns, as well as heard a lot of concerns from some of the residents. I would like to bring this item over to the October 15 council meeting. I think it's the 15th, right?
Yes, that is correct.
If you please, so that a representative from Rome could please be here to answer some of our questions.
Okay, so is that requesting a motion?
Yes, I may, I do a motion. I'm sorry.
I want to add a little bit to that, if I may, before we take a vote. My concern has always been that I like to see the totality of what things are going to look like. And I think sometimes, and I've said it publicly, I think sometimes we're a little short-sighted when it comes to looking at the entire picture. And the reason I say that, because we had the park plaza that was going to go across the street, which was going to be open space for our community. And after two years of working on it, it was pulled, and now it's going to become a 72 apartment building. And so when I look at all the projects together, we're proposing the Rome project, which already have concerns about parking spaces. And then we're looking into a 72 apartment building right across the street. I'm not sure we have assessed the entire, the totality, like I said, of what the impact's going to be to our residents. We just happen to be a little unfortunate that we're nestled between three major freeways, which is, you know, the 605, the 10, and the 210. And I know, based on numbers in the past, that we have one of the highest numbers of asthma, including, especially in our children. So I think that we need to take a step back and really see. I feel uncomfortable moving with the Rome project, even consider it, until we know what's going to happen with the 72 apartment buildings. Because I cannot conceive just having all these apartments around city hall. At some point, we're going to disappear. So I think we need to look at the impact to the health of our community. I think we need to look at the impact in traffic if we do go with both of those projects. And I'm not comfortable with it as well. So I would propose that we really take a look at all those potential problems that we're going to have for our community. And the health of our community is something that I don't think we consider. And Hilda Solis, our supervisor, keeps saying over and over how we need parks. And one of the assessments that was done through LA County, turns out that we are the poorest city in terms of park in comparison to the surrounding areas. So I still don't see why we want to go with these two major projects and forego the beautiful park plaza that we have proposed. So that's a big concern of mine. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So at this point, we'll get back to the original. Yes, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
Thank you. You know, the purpose of an exclusive negotiation agreement is for the developer to study the various impacts and the aspects of a project. And I think it would be good to, I mean, in my opinion, extend this, bring them back for a study session, put all those concerns on the table, and then let them go back and make that assessment, then report back to us. And E&amp;A doesn't commit us to a project. It's, it basically gives a developer the time and, you know, the right to put a project together and to consider all the concerns, I think, that we are presenting. So I would be in favor of extending this E&amp;A. I don't, I don't see that there is any harm that would come from it. And I think it would allow the developer to continue to study these different issues that have been raised. Otherwise, I think the response back will be, well, you know, we can't really, you know, take the time and the resources from our company to study the, you know, parking situation if there's an alternative parking that will be required. Or, you know, to engage in another, like, traffic study because it's, it's, it just, that's not the way that developers do things with our city or with any city. And I've worked in the development world, so that's, that would be my motion.
All right. So hold on.
I had a motion.
Hold on, because there's a motion on the table. So let's go with Ricardo. Hold on, let's go with Ricardo real quick. And then we entertain the first motion by Councilmember Cruz Baca.
I want to support Councilwoman Monica Garcia's on this issue because, as she says, the E&amp;A is just an opportunity to continue to explore the opportunities within our property. And with that, they want to come back here to bring back information more about the parking and other issues that they have. But... the parking and other issues that they have. But I don't see, you know, each project requires an EIR, which takes into consideration a number of issues, one of which is parking. So I think that that project would have done that, and we could reevaluate it there, including the project that will maybe come here soon, is the one with the, we had supported the Civic Center with the housing, the apartment units. I think that that would help develop a downtown, be able to bring more foot traffic to downtown, and kind of just have a, you know, better downtown. I know some council members don't support that concept, but I believe that by having a downtown with a lot of foot traffic, with housing around it, begins to develop a better downtown. We have a number of park opportunities. I know that at Olive School, I think Manny Carrillo, our director of park and recreation, was supporting a multi-soccer field, a playground, that would be with the school district and the city, and working together. You know, that would fulfill the park requirement that we have by Hilda Solis's office, which would be at that location, so.
Let's get back, let's get back to the focus. Okay, at this point, we're going to go, I'm going to go back to the original. Councilmember Cruz Baca had made a motion to bring the item back.
Yes.
And it was seconded.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Susan Rubio. So at this point, there's a motion, and it was seconded. Any objections?
I object.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, one objection from Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. So at this point, I will request that we conduct roll call. And that is, that is to bring the actual proposal for the Rome project back at a later time.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Monica Garcia?
No.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
No. Okay, the motion fails. The vote is three-two. So at this point, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia had made a previous motion to move.
My motion is to move forward with the E&amp;A extension and to ask the developer to come back and address all of the concerns that have been mentioned tonight.
All right, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any objections?
Yes.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, one objection. Councilmember Cruz Baca, we could take roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Monica Garcia?
This is to move forward with the E&amp;A.
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No, and I have a question. I want to know if this has anything to do with the monies that they received for their campaign from Rome, which Council, Mayor Pro Tem Garcia got $7,500. I'm just extending it for two weeks, so that's why I'm voting no.
All right, so at this point, there's a motion, and noted, at this point, go ahead with the roll call.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Well, I need to restate my concern, and the thing is that we have two projects going on at the same time, and we're extending E&amp;A to the 72, I'm sorry, to the Rome and the 72 apartment building across the street. And when you have both projects going at the same time, and they're both doing traffic studies at the same time, they're not looking at how they're going to impact each other. They're seeing it individually. What happens when you have both projects going at the same time? So they're going to come back and say there's no traffic, you know, impact, but what happens when we have both together? So I think we still need to take a step back and make sure that we're looking at the big picture. How are these two projects at the same time going to impact the community? And, you know, going back to what you were saying, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, a park plaza in the front of our City Hall would be the ideal place to put a park plaza, because one of the things that we are lacking, it's a center point.
Hold on, hold on.
A center point, so that we could entice other businesses and other developments to come in, but you need a center focal point that's going to look beautiful, so that we can make our project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go on to, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco? Oh, okay, all right, so let's go back with the vote. Madam City Clerk, I think you ended up with?
With you.
With you.
No.
No, she said no, okay.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes.
So it's three.
All right, so the motion is three-two, the actual E&amp;A moves forward. All right, all right, so at this point, we'll go over to item number, item number four, which is also requested by Councilmember Cruz Baca, the approval of the supplemental task order for the San Gabriel River Bike Way project. Councilmember Cruz Baca.
I have a, I have a concern and a question. Originally, and according to the gentleman that got up to speak on behalf of AAE, said that it was $106,510 to complete this task order for the San Gabriel River Bike Way project. However, now there's another $35,600 that's being asked. Why wasn't this $35,600 added originally? What I see is that, in looking at a lot of the invoices and the questions that Councilmember Rubio and myself have had, is that if you add the $35,000 to the $106,000, it's above the $120,000 cap that the public director, Public Works Director has. So to me, it seems like they were billing separately so that that way they could go ahead and finish the project, even though it's over the original budget that they're allowed. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the $35,600. Where is this money coming from? And also, I don't want to approve something where I feel that I have my feet to the fire, because this happened during the vector voting that we did as well, and I know that it's not on the agenda, however, I'm using that as an example, because I feel that we need more clarification as to why this $35,600 wasn't added to the original task force, order, task order, I'm sorry.
All right, so you want, are we asking, did you want to answer? Or did you want the individuals to come up?
I would like the individuals to answer me, please, since they're the ones that gave the presentation a little while ago. And I forget the gentleman's name in my shirt.
Sid, what's the gentleman's name? Who's going to, who's going to do the?
The law.
Okay, all right, Sid Masavi.
Mr. Mayor, earlier, when I spoke, I mentioned that this project originally was bid out for 300, if I get my numbers straight right now, I'll tell you. It was 300, I'm trying to get the numbers here. 350,000, something in that range. But what happened is, there were two concurrent projects happening at the same time. One was the City of Baldwin Park's project, and also COG was contemplating a master planning of bikeway systems within the San Gabriel Valley. So the project was held here so that the scope of two projects to be identified, and if there was any savings for the City of Baldwin Park, then the scope would be adjusted accordingly. However, later on, there is a timeframe for the, for the grant, and there were milestones within the grant that that needed to be completed. And that's why the department at the time decided to move on at least the engineering aspect of the project so that we can meet the milestones that grant was requiring. And that was the engineering and surveying part of it. That's why the task order was only for engineering and surveying. There are other elements to this project than grant requires that. As I mentioned earlier, those are geotechnical investigation, environmental studies, construction support services, and right-of-way engineering, real estate services. These items are not done yet. If they were also added to whole picture, number would be much larger than what you have in front of you. I can answer any questions you may have.
You have to look at, you know, the questions that I have had, Mr. Masavi, and it's nothing against your company or anything, but usually in business, you give a budget as to how much it's going to cost, whether you're using different grants in this, for instance, or whether you're using general fund money from the city or prospectively, or from the project that you're working on. I feel that we should have seen the total budget to see how much all of this was going to cost, not only the surveying for $106,000, like you said, and you do have it included in here, in the, in the, in the staff report. However, my question is that this $35,600 pops up out of nowhere. It was never originally in your budget, in your proposal.
No, Councilmember Baca.
So is that work after the fact? Or, I just need, I just need to know, because, you know, we had a project in, or a company in line, which was SOMAS, and then all of a sudden, because like I said earlier, we had our feet to the fire, per se, we had to go with your company, even though it had already been said by the Public Works Director at that time to go with SOMAS. So I'm confused as to, so that I can understand the invoices, and that was the whole reason why Councilmember Rubio and myself, and I spoke to you about this after, why it was so important for us to sit down with you and Mr. Abasi, so that we could talk about this, instead of in the middle of a council meeting or whatever, so we could understand and all these questions could be brought out, or the answers would be brought to us. And those are my concerns, is that I feel that a lot of these invoices are very hard to understand, and sometimes even our staff has had a hard time understanding them. So if it's difficult to understand an invoice, then I have concerns, because an invoice should be very clear and not come back after the fact, as far as coming back for more money.
As I explained earlier, this project has a budget of about $400,000. So it's not something new. And when you said that SOMAS had a bid of $350,000 for this project, so that was within the limits of the budget. As I mentioned earlier, the council decided not to give to SOMAS because there was a concurrent project going on with COG, and they were not sure what the scope was going to be impacted. And that's why I think the council decided to hold on on the award of the contract. But we came here in January 2016, and I believe at the time, the department felt that needed to show some progress within the project, otherwise the grant would be lapsing. And that's why they asked us to start with first part of the project, which was surveying and engineering part of it. There are still other elements of this project still needs to happen. This is not the end of it. If there are other elements of the project, either we do it or somebody else does, excuse me, it still needs to be done. So this project overall, I took my three minutes to explain that to you, is that if we do it, the total cost would be about $80,000 less than what SOMAS was offering in August of 2015. So there are different elements, there are different funding sources for this, and they're all budgeted. It's not out of the budget.
Well, you said that, you said that about the project, but if, let me correct you that the reason that the project was held until the very end of when the deadline was, was because Councilmember Pacheco pulled it twice from the agenda. So the deadline was approaching, and that's why we decided to go ahead with this. So I don't mean to correct you, but I'm sure that you can listen to the minutes, like I have, of previous council meetings when he did pull it twice, until the deadline was approaching, and then, of course, we went ahead, like I said, and I keep repeating, our feet were to the fire, and we went ahead and went with your company. I just need to know, what else are we going to be looking at as far as expenses? Where can we look at that? Where did you do a budget proposal so that we can take a look at the total expenses of what the $350,000 are going to entail?
Councilmember Baca, I didn't do the budget. Budget was originally done by the city. And the budget was about, I believe, $400,000 total for all of the different aspects of the engineering, environmental studies, and so on. So there are different elements to this project, and engineering design is one of them, environmental is another, geotechnical is another aspect, right-of-way and real estate is another aspect of this project, and after that comes to construction, which is another aspect of the project. And overseeing the construction is another element of the project. There are several elements to this project. So I didn't do the budget. Budget was done when the grant application was put together. We're just following whatever the budget numbers were. I'm sure City has all those numbers for you.
Okay.
And I think we tried as best as we can to explain in these papers that we passed out.
And I appreciate that, and I still believe, and I will, and I will reiterate, that what Councilmember Rubio has said in the past, and I agree with her, that we really do need a study session with your company so that we can go over all these invoices and all the questions, which are endless.
Anytime.
And I know that I, we did get some opposition from Mayor Pro Tem Garcia, because she doesn't feel that, but as long as we have a quorum, I think that we could go ahead. And in all fairness to your company, I would really like to sit down and discuss all these issues, so that we're not wasting residents' time and our staff by discussing it here during the council meeting, as we've been accused of.
All right, okay, this one, hold on. Councilmember, are you finished? Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, then I'll come over to Vice Mayor, and then we'll go over to Susan. All right.
Last, if I may call on that particular project, the grant was being addressed and applied by SOMAS, but then COG, I believe, had to change the scope, because they were going to also do some of the work, and it would duplicate a part of what the grant was doing through SOMAS. So, you know, it had to be started, the deadline had to be looked, we looked at it, and then on the second evening, he started to have a clarification on what COG decided to do as a part of our project, and what the grant through SOMAS was going to do. So there was a change in scope there, and that's why, you know, they didn't go with SOMAS. SOMAS was, I think, they just requested a proposal, and they say, but they did clarify and get that. So there was a change in scope of work, and it cannot achieve, unless from the city, because the city, COG was going to do some of the work that was going to go through the grant, and then the city decided to change that scope. So that's what occurred.
All right, thank you. At this point, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
Thank you. So earlier, it was stated that we have prevented any council members from meeting with you, and I just want to say that I encourage, if there are any questions, you know, anybody here on this council has any questions, to meet with you. I mean, when I, I've looked at this document, and what I understand is that this overall project will cost $873,000. And you've already had a task order that was previously approved in the amount of The fact that this item is coming to us tonight in the amount of $35,600, it tells me that the system is working, because what we have stated is that $120,000 is the cap. Anything more than that, you know, we have to take it up as a council.
Right.
And so the fact that it's in front of us tells me that things are moving as they should. So, and then I see here that in the future, we're going to see some construction costs at about $731,000, and some of that will be offset by a projects grant. The Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority is also kicking in some money here. So, I mean, that's what I see, and at this point, I mean, I'd be, I'm perfectly fine in moving this forward. I understand that, you know, there will be a change of scope of work, especially where we were trying to build in some economies of scale or efficiencies in working with the COG. And that's not the first time, it won't be the last time. I understand that we need to meet a milestone, or we could jeopardize some of the monies. So, does that correct, Sam?
Uh.
Everything that I've stated? Would you agree? I mean, everything that I've stated, the way that I understand this?
Yes, we have applied for an extension on this project, and we are right now on schedule to have it completed per that, per that, per that schedule.
Okay. That sounds good to me.
One more. Okay, hold on, Vice Mayor.
If I may add that?
Go ahead.
Anytime, any of, any of the council members like to meet and discuss any aspect of any projects, I'll be more than happy to meet with you in the City Hall, any of the offices, anywhere you like to, to explain all the details, and all the numbers, all the project progresses, and all of that. So we're here to serve the city, and anything you ask, we'll provide for you.
All right, thank you. This one, I'll open it up to Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Thank you. Excuse me, I just got a real cold, so forgive my voice. I think that there's been a lot of misstatements on the dais right now, and so I'm going to make a couple of clarifications. So first of all, I heard council, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Monica Garcia saying that the system is working. It is absolutely not working. And the reason it's not working is that we had requested for the cap to go down to the original $30,000. Well, it was originally $10,000 for department heads, and it went up to $120,000. She's saying, because it's working, it's here in front of us. It's here in front of us, after we've already spent $106,000 that we didn't have a choice to spend. So now it's in front of us, requesting $36,000 more, and at this point, as we just heard, there's timelines that we have to adhere to. So at this point, we might as well not have been given a choice, because right now, we're being told, approve $36,000, or we're going to lose this project. We never had a chance to approve the $106,000. So by the time it comes to us, we are out of options. If we don't approve it, the project falls through. So at this point, we don't have a choice. So no, now it's coming to us at the point where we don't have a choice. We have to approve it. So this is the way it's set up, where we don't get a choice, and it comes to us where it's too late. So what, going back to what Councilmember Cruz Baca was saying, if the cap is $120,000, right now it's a little bit more over $140,000 now. That's the way the project should have been written in the first place because then we would have had the opportunity to see the entire project altogether. And that's not what happened. It was broken up into two sections and I know that there's pieces to this, but you just cited SOMAS's, um, uh, cost proposal, but they included everything that needed to be included. So we got to see the entire scope of the work. Um, another misstatement that I heard right now is, um, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco saying that, um, the city stopped it because of the COG and it gets a little convoluted. No, the city didn't stop it. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, single-handedly pulled that item. The city did not stop it because our public works director kept pushing for it because of the deadline. He submitted that project to us twice and Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco pulled it. So to say the city stopped it, that's a misstatement. I also heard you say, um, Mr. Sitt Masabi, that, um, council approved and council approved. I heard that statement twice. Council did not approve it. As I'm clarifying right now, it didn't come to us. So I take offense to saying council approved it and that the city stopped it. Absolutely not. Those are misstatements. On another, you know, area that I have concerns is that when the project was put out for proposals, you were not part of the proposals. We have four companies that made that proposal. So at that point, I'm wondering, how did you know to propose it and all of a sudden it comes down to a lower bidding process? Other council meetings, as, and I might invite all of you to go to the previous council meetings where, uh, Mayor Potem Monica Garcia was insisting that, you know, we have a qualified staff. Why are we questioning our staff and we should focus on their qualifications and let them do their job? Then why don't we do this with this project? If our staff said that SOMAS was the most qualified and the one that had the most experience, then how do we end up with a different company that didn't go through the bidding process? So I think there's a lot of misstatements and a lot of misinformation, but all I know is that we did not approve the project and the city did not stop the project. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco pulled it. And so I'm a little concerned as how this project was handed to you. So just under protest, you have your three votes. I'm going to have to decline to vote on this because I'm not giving a choice. What I'm hearing, either you vote for it or we're going to lose the project. So if you can vote for it, I'm going to just say no.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember.
No, I'm going to approve it then if that's the end of your discussion.
All right, all right. So at this point, uh, anyone, uh, you had entertained that motion, Vice Mayor.
I did.
Okay, what was your motion?
My motion is that we do not approve this until we get some clarification. Unfortunately, we're up against the deadline and I've repeated this four times. I feel like my feet are to the fire and because I believe that we were, we were misled with this by, originally by a company that was supposed to have come in and then all of a sudden we get another company that, that was not even part of the bidding process.
All right. So at this point, there's a motion by Councilmember Cruz Baca, uh, to deny, or to bring it, you're, to deny it or bring it back?
Deny it.
Okay, to deny it. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Uh, at this point, any objections?
Objection.
Okay, objection, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Uh, at this point, our last city treasurer, Maria Contreras.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
We're voting what?
Yeah, this is because there was objections. Okay, so your motion to pass.
Your motion.
No, I do not want to pass.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
No.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes. Okay, so the motion passes 3-2. Um, so I'll, uh, yes, Councilmember.
If I can just add, I mean.
Yes, go ahead. Oh, excuse me, stop please.
I mean, there, you know, there have been mentions of misstatements, but I just want to add that AAE was brought in by council vote and they were brought in to be the, the city's engineer. And this was a vote that was taken and approved by, uh, the mayor, myself, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, Councilmember Susan Rubio, with, um, Councilmember Cruz Baca dissenting on that vote. So the idea that AAE has just kind of come out of nowhere, um, I think that's a misstatement. And I just, you know, wanted to, to point that out. Um, again, this is a project that has received the council's blessing. Uh, we've directed staff to move forward with this, with this project. Otherwise, staff wouldn't be moving forward with it. And, you know, to say that staff is just kind of unilaterally moving forward with, with these projects and spending, um, close to what, 400,000 and overall a million dollars when we account for the grants, um, I think that we are, whoever's making that statement is questioning our staff. And if there, if you, if you think that staff, that our directors are doing anything unethical or illegal, um, you know, I mean, let's have a conversation about that. But I don't think that that's happening. And, you know, from what, where I stand, what I can tell, council gave direction to staff to move forward on this project. This engineering firm was also council approved. Um, I understand what you're, what you're referring to about, you know, the RFP process. There was a bid, a bid process in securing the engineering firm. So, you know, these, these statements, um, they can, you know, they can be misleading either way. Um, but let's not get into all of that, like the back and forth because we'll be here all night. Uh, so my, my motion is let's move forward with this project. It's a great project.
And voted.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's move forward with this project. It's a great project. Let's all get on, let's all get on board. Let's all get behind it. Our, our city will benefit from this and it's $35,000 that we're talking about. Um, so, you know, our residents will benefit, our, our, you know, the youth of our community will benefit, families that, that use our bikes. It's positive. Let's move forward.
Mayor?
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Baca, before we move forward and on your motion, Vice Mayor, I need to clarify the last motion because I, I think it was ambiguous and I don't think it was done properly.
Okay, so.
So if I.
Go ahead.
The motion was by Councilmember Baca to deny.
To deny.
This project.
Yes.
Councilmember Baca voted no.
That's right.
And Councilmember Rubio voted no. That means that you don't want to deny it, you want to accept it. And then you all voted yes, which means that you voted yes to deny it. And I don't think that was the intent of the council.
No.
I don't think that was the intent of the council.
All right, all right.
Well, they all sit right there. Excuse me, wait, wait just a minute. The motion was to deny.
Yes.
I believe that Councilmember Baca wants to vote yes on that motion.
Yes.
And that Councilmember Rubio meant to vote yes to deny it.
Okay, say it again. Good attorney. All right, so go ahead. We're going to go ahead with your motion again.
Yes, I make a motion that we deny, uh, the 35,600 for the San Gabriel River Bikeway Project.
All right, so it's motion second. Okay, any objections?
Objection.
One object. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Potem Monica Garcia?
No.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
No. Okay, the mo, the mo, the motion, uh, dies, um, there's 3-2.
And so let me go ahead and make the motion to approve this item. I made a motion.
Okay, motion second, any objections?
Yes.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
No.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes, the motion passes 3-2. I just want to say, uh, I want to thank the engineering firm. Uh, it's unfortunate your guys are having to take some heat here, but let me just say this, uh, once it's all finished, I'm going to get my 1973 Rolls Union bike. I'm going to be on that track. Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to clarify something and I, I feel, um, I feel insulted and I feel that my intelligence is being insulted by Mayor Potem Garcia and it's not the first time that she does it. I am for, and earlier today I said it and I'm going to repeat it again, I am for helping our community. There isn't anything that I wouldn't do, that I do, donations, marching, whatever I do for our community. This is a wonderful project. I love riding my bike. I look forward to being on my bicycle as well. I have a brand new cruiser. I would love, no pun intended. I, um, I would love to be on this, on this bike trail myself instead of going all the way where I go to Rancho Cocomanga. However, I feel that the way this contract, I feel, and maybe it's unfair to Mr. Masabi and his, and I will give them the benefit of the doubt. However, I feel that the council was the one that pulled the wool over us because they voted for something that they knew that there was no bid. They knew that this was wrong for them to proceed with this. And because there were the votes, I'm sorry, I will continue to say that I am in agreement with the way I voted because I felt that that was the right way to vote.
Yeah, and I just, for, for the record, you, you as an elected official, just like each and every one of us, you are entitled to your personal opinion.
Yes.
And I respect that. All right, yes, Councilmember.
I need to address that as well because, you know, every time that we question something on the dais, and I think we've heard it over and over again, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Monica Garcia turns and says that we're attacking our staff and this has nothing to do with our staff. In fact, I was advocating for listening to our staff when Dan Wa proposed this plan, this project, and, and suggested the SOMAS company. That's what we were hoping that would happen, but now they're saying the city. I'm going to object to that term because the city did not. We did not approve that project on the dais. It was done where we didn't have a say so. It was 106,000 that we didn't get to see until now that it's coming back for more money, we get to see the difference. And the reason I said I objected under protest because I know they're going to get their three votes. The reason I objected under protest because last time I voted for the vector control and it was just to inform our residents. And again, A and E ended up with that contract and later on Monica Garcia was saying that I approved it. No, I approved to go to our residents. I never approved the company. So again, that's why I have to say no because I know later on it will come back and she will address the fact that we approved it. No, we did not. At this point, we're not given a choice. Again, just under protest because I wasn't given the opportunity to vote on 106,000, which is a lot of money. And I didn't appreciate the fact that Dan Wa, our public works director, who's a professional that went through the bidding process, that picked four companies and at that time, A and E did not participate. In fact, they, they chose not to participate and that was on them and that's okay. How do we four go for companies that went through the process and were selected and we just completely, you know, went with somebody else? So again, this process is just not the way we should do business. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
I would say for whatever reasons, uh, Councilmember Rubio wants to convolute a lot of the process that happened, there was a change in scope. COGS decided at some point that they would cover some of the cost and that changed the amount. I mean, if we had a grant with SOMAS, we would have paid a lot more money than we had just not done some of the things and let the COGS do some of the parts of the project that, that they were supposed to do. So it's probably better that staff do some kind of a report to, you know, to talk about this because up here it's difficult for, you know, you, you sit on, council and whether you bring up a lot of issues that are not true, you make a lot of misstatements, but better that staff who's done the work and let it to, to come back with some kind of report telling us the chronology of, of what happened, uh, with this project, just to clarify it all. I think it's just wrong that, uh, you keep making these accusations about our staff and they're the ones that are, that are, you know, doing the work, you know, they approved this. I'm sorry, but you keep talking back here?
Mayor? You know, you're. Please stop. I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Just please stop.
I'm very patient.
Okay, continue on, Councilmember.
So, yes, I'm talking to you.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, just.
Whatever. Okay, so anyways, if we could just, um, uh, you know, staff, forgive them the opportunity. They approve, uh, a lot of these, you know, invoices as they go through because in a construction project, you're going to, you can't stop, you know, we approve 1.5 million dollars for streets and if I were to come back at any second to, you know, for change orders or whatever, I mean, we trust them, that they're professionals to make a decision to, you know, to tell us what percentage they're complete, uh, you know, what kind of work needs to be done. So there are, uh, trust that we have and have our staff to be able to get this done. I mean, same thing in this project. Staff approves the invoices. We don't do it, we're policymakers. We let staff, we have professionals, buy the lines that approve the cost and a lot of the issues that are going on. So, uh, you know, uh, I just think that to keep accusing staff of, of wrongdoing and that they didn't sign the invoices and all of the negativity that you bring upon our staff is, is wrong, you know? I trust our staff, I think they've all got job. Uh, you know, you know, you question issues, uh, in the last few council meetings about AAE, they came here and showed you all the work they did, uh, you know, and you, you know, so the marketing actions in the past council meetings about Councilman Cruz Baca and Susan Lozano, that AAE was doing work, uh, that, that they're enjoying it and getting paid. And they just demonstrated that they did all of their work here and if you want to have questions about it, you can go ahead and meet them.
Uh, Mayor?
Okay, Councilmember, uh, Cruz Baca, go ahead.
It's, it's, it's really funny how things are misconstrued and it's okay for us to make comments and I include Councilmember Rubio, myself. When we make comments, there, there lies, there are allegations and we're blaming staff. I would never blame staff. Staff does a wonderful job. It's the decisions that are made on this dais that I question as to why, why are those decisions being made here? And it's very unfortunate that our companies like AAE and some of our other vendors are in the crossfire of what's going on because this has become a personal issue. Like I said earlier today, this is not about what's the best thing for our community. This is what is right for each individual person up here and not to look at what really is going on within the community and what needs to be done. Our staff does a beautiful job. I have no, I have no complaints and no comments in the years that I've been sitting up here and before that. It's the decisions that are made up here that I question and that's what I do not trust.
I want to clarify one point, Mayor.
Councilmember.
So Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco said that we trust our staff, that they're, they're professionals. So I have the invoice, I'm sorry, the staff report from the professional, which is Dan Wa, dated August 5th, 2015, which was last year, where he, in his staff report, recommended SOMAS. If he is a professional, then why don't we go with that company? I have it right here. August 5th, 2015, his recommendation was SOMAS. It's not a lie. I have it right here and I'm going to ask anybody that wants to see it. Here it is.
Let me see it right now.
There it is.
Okay. Is this the one that I pulled?
2015, August 2015.
Okay, because there was a change in scope of work.
So how did.
That COGS, excuse me, COGS was going to get involved in this and do some of the work. So, that's why there was a change in the scope.
So, you knew this, but yet our public works director, that works directly with these projects, didn't know about the change in scope and all that? No, this is Dan Wah. This is the person that was in charge of that department. This is the person that suggested we go with this company. And he brought it twice to us, not just once. So, this was not our staff changing their mind, that was you pulling it. And I have the staff report right here. So, for you to say that I'm lying, that's incorrect. I have it in my hand. I've often said, when I say something, I have the paperwork in my hand. 2015. And here it is, I'm not going to lie, but here it is.
Okay, at this point, Vice Mayor, hold on, just a couple of more, let's move on.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, let me just say, okay, Dan Wah is no longer our director, but even when he was here, I do remember one item coming to us involving street sweeping services. And that came to the city council. We were going to approve it, or vote on it, I should say. And I asked that it be continued. I think Cruz Baca also seconded that motion. And then the very next day, our director, Dan Wah, sends an email saying that it's going to go out to Athens. Or, you know, yes, it's all in the email, and...
Oh, excuse me, hold on, allow her to finish, please.
Why, why are we getting so defensive, I wonder?
I'm not defensive.
Hold on, hold on, you guys, hold on, Vice Mayor has the floor. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
So, once, once we had the, once we had the conversation here on the dais, then we decided to keep it in-house and to, you know, continue. So, it wouldn't be the first time that there were changes, is my point. Second is, I actually agree with councilmember Cruz Baca, that our focus should be on the community. Why are we sitting here bickering about this stuff? I mean, two council meetings ago, it was the contractors. Last council meeting, it was questioning whether staff was... This time, we're questioning the decision-making on this dais. I think what we all need to do is, we all need to be professional, we all need to be a little bit more mature. Make the decision that you feel most comfortable with. I hope it's based on conviction and on, you know, and a knowledgeable decision. But make the decision that you make and stick to it. And it's on record, it's on public record. And there's no pulling the, you know, the wool over anybody's eyes. It's black and white on public record. When you make that decision, if you feel like you've made a decision in error, you have the opportunity to say, you know what? I made an error, and this is why. But own your decision. I'm not, I'm not going to question why you make decisions, I'm not going to question why you make decisions. And let's not just, you know, we're, we're targeting different people. It's like, the other day it was contractors, then it was, you know, staff's questionable, you know, staff reports or whatever. Now it's us. You guys, let's get our focus back on the community. The community needs us right now. They need, you know, infrastructure projects, they need public safety, they, you know, they need parks, joint noose. I mean, that's where our focus should be. So, with that, I'm going to stop.
Alright, okay, so at this point, can we move forward, everyone?
Yes, but you know what, I just want to say one thing. I have always stuck to my decision, even though I'm the Lone Ranger. Always. That's one thing about me. Anybody that's known me for many years, they know that when I make a decision, it's because I thought it out very carefully. I don't just do it on impulse or because someone gave me money for my campaign. I do it because I feel that that's the right thing for the, for the people of our community. I don't just, like, all of a sudden decide, oh, this is the popular vote, I'm going to go ahead with them. No, as you know, I have voted alone many times. And I will continue to think of what is the best decision that I have to live with on behalf of the people of Baldwin Park. And that's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you very much.
Mayor, and I know, I know he's going around in circle, but you know, once again, it's been four council meetings that we're told not to ask questions.
We don't move on, because this is taxpayer money, this is not our money. And when we're spending millions of dollars, and most of it, we don't know, on these projects that are under $120,000, it is our responsibility, that is why we were elected. And I take offense when I'm told, why are you asking questions? Let's move on. And then we start talking about what's best for the community. This is about money, this is about finances, this is about taxpayer dollar. And I hope at least our residents can appreciate that we keep asking the questions, because we need to safeguard your money. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you very much. And I'll just stand by saying, thank goodness we got these grants, it's awesome. Alright, so at this point, we're going to item number six. Even though it was pulled, councilmember Cruz Baca wanted to make a statement, request approval parcel map 1426 LA Fitness.
Uh, yes, I remembered that when they, and of course, I came in, I believe, when the LA Fitness was already just about to be approved. But I remember, and I might be wrong, but please correct me, that they had said that they were going to build a track around the LA Fitness, so that the people would be able, or the residents, so that our residents or anyone would be able to use the track all around the facility, the boundaries of the property, in other words. And without having to pay for their membership. There's a wall that goes right against, just about out to the street. I don't see anywhere where they could possibly put a track. Was that forgotten, or was that something that was voted on without my recollection?
I don't...
Or what happened? That's number one.
Okay, alright.
Number two is that, another thing is that I remember that councilmember Rubio and, specifically councilmember Rubio, wanted to know about the aesthetics. She wanted to be sure that there would be trees and there would be something green, something nice-looking, especially for that particular corner. And I don't know if they're going to plant any trees, it doesn't look like it. It seems like it's going to be mainly pavement. So, that's another thing that I'd like to see. Was that in the original contract? Robert, if you can please check the track and the aesthetics, or the garden, or whatever you want to call it, the landscaping? Because I think that, I remember that, I believe even you, Mayor Lozano, said that would be great to have that track around it. You know, I know a lot of people that could use it, that go to Sierra Vista to walk in the morning. So, you know, I would like to check into that.
Sure.
Mayor, and I do remember that, and I was a little disappointed when I drove by there, because it just seems to be such a big block of wall. And it's so close to the edge of the street. And that was one of the big, at least selling points for me, that they were going to surround the building with trees, and it was going to have available space for people to walk their dogs or walk around. And it just seems like they've taken the entire space. And I'm not sure we can go backwards on it, because it's already been built. But let's figure out, because we need to look into that and stop the project. And if they're not going to put trees in the back and do what they need to do, then let's figure out how to compensate in the front of the parking structure, because I definitely remember that conversation. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, well, this is a subject that will be returning. Alright, item number seven, which is also requested by councilmember Cruz Baca, request approval parcel map number 1433 Kaiser Hospital Parking Lot Structure Expansion. Councilmember?
Um, here, the parking is, I know that they're doing an expansion to the, to the original parking lot. However, I know several residents that live on some of those streets that surround Kaiser. Their biggest complaint, and maybe there's something we can do about that, is that a lot of the people, instead of parking in the parking structure, park in front of their homes. And they have no way of parking their cars in front of their house when there's 100 cars there already early in the morning. Because I've asked, when is, when do they start parking? They said as early as 6:00 or 6:30 in the morning. So, if we could please look at that and see what exactly... I would like to pull this item over until October the 15th, so that we can please get some answers about the parking, and see what we're going to be doing about some of the surrounding parking for that in particular. And also, I don't know if they've already come up with a design, but I would look, I would like for them to have some type of an idea and make the design a little nicer. I remember that when we were at the goal line opening, and we got off in the city of Azusa, and we saw the new parking structure with sort of like a hacienda-type look, whatever you want to call it. And it looked very nice, like there had been some thought put into the design, so it didn't just look like a block of parking lot. So, I would like to see, maybe, I'm hoping it's not too late, but it doesn't seem like it is, because they're barely looking at the expansion. But I would like to see if we could have some input as to what the design of that will look like.
Mayor?
Yes, councilmember, yes.
I would also like to see, if we pull this over, on Bass Avenue, typically along that road right there, there needs to be a lot of, sort of, the property there is just not, the landscaping looks horrible, it's all dirt. So, there's some way, maybe they could pay for kind of cleaning up that area along Bass Avenue. From Ballpark Boulevard, down Bass, going toward the freeway. So, I don't, maybe we could bring that up in the same, in the same hearing you're talking about.
So, I'd like, I would like to continue this item to the October 15th.
Yeah, I would second that.
Yes, alright, so at this point, the second item.
Move it over, but bring Kaiser to talk about it. I have some concerns about fixing the landscaping on Bass Avenue, and the ones that councilwoman Cruz Baca may have also.
The design as well, Shannon, and the parking surrounding the area. I don't know if we're going to have to go for permit parking, or what we would need to do, because I do get a lot of complaints from several of the people that I know that live in, along Judith and those little streets.
You know what, I think that your proposal of actually, let's definitely look into permit parking. Because there is a lot of excessive amount of employees from Kaiser that utilize those particular areas. However, the Kaiser itself is limited as to what they can do to their employees or visitors. So, let's find out the input from the residents and do, yes, sir?
Excuse me, Mayor, sorry to interrupt. I do want to point out that just recently, we did establish permit parking on Judith and the other streets that cross with Judith. So, that whole area right in front of Kaiser, it's all permit parking. Residents have been issued two permits per property, so...
Can I just add to that, only because I feel like that section of Ballpark gets neglected, and this is what I hear from our residents, and it's kind of true, it's on the other side of the freeway. And there's a block wall along the, in front of the parking structure that leads to all the homes. Can you just look into it, see if there's any way we can landscape and put some trees there for those residents? It's just, it's not fair for them that they pay all this money for their, for their homes. And then, just, everything goes around them, it just doesn't look that great. So, can we look into maybe possibly putting a few trees ourselves in front of the parking structure? Thank you.
Alright, absolutely. Okay, so at this point, that's it, and that particular area, there's no public hearing. And reports of officers. Let me just say, on this parliamentary procedure rules to be considered by the city council. Obviously, I've been here on the council since 1994. In 1992, I think the mayor back then was named Fidel Vargas, not so certain. You know, ran the city council based on number three, and was a mixture of Robert rules of order. And I'll give you a good example. Spoke to the Pomona. Pomona runs their city based on the similar that we do, number three, with a mixture of Robert rules of order. So, it's kind of like more of a guidance type, if you will. So, I'm, at this point, I'm going to say, I'm going to go, yeah, I'll make my motion.
I'll second.
Any objections?
Yes.
Oh, okay, Madam City Clerk? Roll call.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No, and it's because it's too vague. I would really like to see, before we vote for this, or I know that we've already voted and there's a motion, I would really like to see specifically what the rules are going to be and what we're going to be following, instead of just flying by the seat of our pants.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
I agree, we need clear-cut guidance for us up here on the dais. I think it would, you know, help the decorum and just help us move the meetings along faster. Thank you.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Uh, yes. To move forward with item number three. I think you already...
Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
Okay, so at this point, the...
No, nobody... Mayor Peteen Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay, the motion passes three, two. Alright, thank you. At this point, we're going to be ending. I just want to bring up a thing with reference, and I know we'll probably talk to the Rome company, is to set up some type of parking permit system in front of the actual, in front of the metro village, because I think residents are starting utilizing that as personal parking, which is, of course, an issue with the venues that are within that particular area. Secondly, in the parking structure itself, of course, there's 500 different spaces. Let's make sure we place on there, no, no type of mechanic activity could be there, changing oil, so on and so forth. Then we'll start seeing all kinds of oil spillage and what have you. So, let's make sure that we place that on there with some type of signage. Violators will be cited or something to that effect. So, we could see that, okay? So, we could get that. Secondly, also, the 99 cent store, I don't know what it's going to take to send them a clear message. We have cited them on many occasions, and I don't know how much, I know it's been a substantial amount. They just don't hire anyone to clean up anyone on the weekend, Saturday, Sunday, just full of paper everywhere. So, we'll have to do that. Plus, if we could let them know for code enforcement, there is some kind of activity on the rooftop of the 99 cent, which closer, closer to the, closer to Ballpark Boulevard, were Jalisco Sporting Goods, some activity going on top of the rooftop. So, if we could get someone up there, helicopters up there, or something, there's some kind of activity going up there. Let the owners of that particular property know. I don't know if it's homeless that have set some kind of housing up there or what have you. Several reports by residents that's down the street. Showed me the pictures, so I'll have to send them off to you. Alrighty?
Mayor?
Yes.
Also, with that note, is I've gotten a lot of complaints about also trash along Ballpark Boulevard by the Jalisco Sporting Goods place.